Tonight, I heard.
Oh, how you guys?
Oh, is that happening?
How you guys?
I'd like to call the regular meeting of April 19, 2022, to order.
Yeah.
I am giving, Councilman Marn is giving the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Budge, allegiance, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Council, you're in receipt of the April 5, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Move to approve?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Public hearings, we do have a public hearing. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to the law. Julie, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, section 1171.02s, modifying the area identified in the sign code as the Old Village Commercial Corridor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak, anything on that?
Nothing to really add to this. Councilman, this is consistent with, I think, council's direction after a recent work session. I'll defer to Mr. Zeeman, who prepared the ordinance.
Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. As indicated, the resolution requesting the planning commission make recommendation did elaborate on the nature of the modification, again, pulling back the overlay to the Jackson Street Little Mountain Road, kind of boundary line, if you will. The planning commission, by 7-0 affirmative vote, did recommend the change, and the planning department actually prepared a brand-new graphic. I know it's not great in your packet, but the original of it actually is pretty crystal clear. So with that, it's as contemplated by council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman. Is the applicant here? If they are, would they like to mention? Oh, applicant? There's no applicant, is there? There's no applicant, okay. Is there, oh, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
There you go.
Go ahead.
That's it.
I thought you were the applicant, too.
Not the right format.
Close. Thank you very much, council.
I was close.
My name's Edward Brown. I'm the CFO and owner, along with my wife Nancy Brown, president of, ladies and gentlemen, and we're hoping that council will approve to remove the overlay. It's really caused us some consternation trying to put good signage on Mentor Avenue. We also already are somewhat difficult to find because of all the greenery we have in front of our building, so we'd like to upgrade the signage in the front. We'd like to add a digital sign, and in order to do that, we need to be able to have the ability, put the type of signage we need, and not fall under the Old Village guidelines. So we're hoping you'll approve that, and I come up with, you'll be happy with.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this? There is none. Council is receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. New legislation. Out tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 22-0-025.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, section 1171.02s, modifying the area identified in the sign code as the Old Village Commercial Corridor and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend.
Mr. Flipiak, you're smiling. I didn't, I knew you didn't want to say. Go ahead. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. and Mrs. Brown for coming, spending their time to present this to the planning commission, and coming here tonight to remind us, I guess remind us all, that sometimes the things that we have in place can kind of grow beyond the scope of its use. And as we drive up now Mentor Avenue, we see how the next generation of signs are coming in, and they're not only used to advertise, but they're used to wayfind. So I applaud Ed and Nancy for bringing this to our attention and kind of displaying to us that there is sort of an uneven playing field with this overlay extended into, actually what was, by Councilman Krieger's illumination, was not the Old Village, but Mentor Township. So I think with that, I throw my support to this, and I would move to...
Suspend.
I'd move to suspend on this.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
And move to approve?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-025 has been approved. Ordinance number 22-0-026.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Members of council, this ordinance does three things. Firstly, it authorizes one permanent cash transfer from the city's general fund for the city share of a federal grant related to the bike rack project. Secondly, it authorizes three temporary cash advances out of the city's general fund for the noted capital project funds that are grant-related. And then, thirdly, it authorizes several appropriation revisions that are all increases to the city's primarily general fund, the largest being an additional $200,000 for the need to purchase fuel at today's market prices, and a $91,500 amount for the electrical upgrade at Mentor Beach Park on a subsequent ordinance. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Council, it's your pleasure. Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Ordinance number 22-0-026 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-027.
An ordinance accepting an offer of purchase for permanent parcel 16B-062O-00-001-0 and 16B-062-0-00-026-0 by CNJ Land Holdings LLC pursuant to chapter 5722 of the Ohio Revised Code, authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase offer and to perform all actions in furtherance of the sale and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Council, most of you will recall that we acquired this, these part, two parcels, actually, as a result of a foreclosure, which we received then through the land bank, and like other parcels of a similar nature, the city has the opportunity to consider selling these parcels, a parcel of this type, for an economic development project. Mr. Malachek, could you tell us a little bit about it?
Yes. CNJ Land Holdings plan to purchase these 10.297 acres of land, which are currently owned by us, as generally referred to in the past as the Tippy Canoe property, reference to Tippy Canoe and Tyler, too, for those who have a historical background, for expansion of their manufacturing operations. The group already currently operates a manufacturing facility in the form of MUM Industries in the city of Mentor, which produces electrical enclosures. Aside from their existing Mentor facility, the group also has operations in two other states and continues to expand their operations and make acquisitions as appropriate. Their plan for the property is to construct a 100,000-square-foot building and eventually employ additional 35 workers. Happy to take any questions.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-027 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-028.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Mentor Economic Development Grant with Cardinal Credit Union.
Mr. Flipiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malachek, please.
All of us are in this room, I think, very familiar with Cardinal Community Credit Union, whose main offices are already here in the city. They have purchased the building located at 8870 Mentor Avenue. It's the former Chase Bank Building that's attached to the Aladdin's Restaurant. It will be a newly renovated branch for Cardinal with a capital investment of just over $2 million for purchase of the building renovations, new machines, technology, new furniture, and signage. They currently have 69 employees here in Mentor and anticipate to add 14 new jobs by the end of this year and 21 new jobs by the end of 2024, and our department has recommended and the managers approved of this ordinance, ED grant, economic development grant, to Cardinal Community Credit Union, amount of $4,000.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Twenty-eight.
Ordinance number 22-0-028 has been approved. Ordinance number 22-0-029. Mr. Flipiak?
An ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with D.E. Williams Electric, Inc., for three-phase electrical power upgrade at Mentor Beach Park.
Mr. Flipiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask Mr. Schweiger to tell us a little bit about this, and, Mr. Schweiger, if you can give us a little bit of history on this, too, and why we're moving ahead with this in terms of the EAC at that building.
You know, we've been moving in the direction of increasing the overall functionality of this building, and several years ago, we'd used some of our, you know, grant funds for a rooftop unit, you know, each of the... So anyway, we've had this rooftop unit up on, you know, ready to go up on top for some time, and then, starting last year, we worked with First Energy to get the three-phase power to the adjacent utility pole, and then this is basically the last phase of this effort, which will give us good quality year-round heating and cooling, and also improve the overall functionality of the building, should anybody want to purchase this in the future. So, other than that, we received two bids for this project, and the low one was submitted by D.E. Williams with a price of $91,500, which was below the opinion of probable construction cost of $95,000. D.E. Williams has successfully completed various projects for us in the past, and I recommend maybe awarded this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweiger. Council? Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-029 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-030.
An ordinance amending Part 1, Title 5, Section 151.12 of the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, to create the new positions of Aquatics Supervisor, Recreation Program Supervisor, and Human Resources Generalist, establishing their pay grades and FLSA classifications, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, from time to time, we bring to you changes to what we refer to as a classification schedule, in this case, for full-time employees. Two of these positions, when we find ourselves in need of a job classification that doesn't quite fit into the current schedule, we'll create a new classification. We do an internal review to make a determination relative to all other positions in the city where it would appropriately fall. In this case, we are recommending the addition of three positions. Two of those are in the Recreation Department, the Aquatics Supervisor, and the Recreation Program Supervisor. That, as well as others that do fit into this classification schedule, are immediately needed to add positions at the new Rec Center. And then, due to some changes within the city manager's office, we will be adding the position of Human Resource Generalist. I would mention that the addition of the Human Resources Generalist position would eliminate the need for administrative assistant that's currently a filled position in our department.
Council? Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-030 has been approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have none. Managers' report.
Thank you, council. We are pleased to announce that Mentor's popular Hometown Heroes Banner Program has sold out for the sixth year in a row. Banders will be displayed around the city center complex between Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and we thank everyone who continue to participate and support this program. Registration for next year will open in January. This is the final call for sponsors for city-sponsored community events. The City of Mentor hosts over 80 events each year. Most are offered free to the public, and many of those are made possible through the generous support of our sponsors to ensure all organizations are properly represented on all marketing materials for this year. And for sponsorship material in general, we ask, we need to confirm and have those paid in full by May 1st, so that is the deadline. If you're interested in sponsorship, please contact the Public Information Office for details. Nonhazardous special collection items, including tires, household electronics, appliances, and more, can now be dropped off at the Lake County Solid Waste Landfill and Recycling Center throughout the summer. The household hazardous waste drop-offs at the Lake County Fairgrounds will still take place on June 11th and the September 24th, from 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., but residents can now take those out to the landfill at any time to get rid of that material. City Mentor has an immediate need to fill lifeguard positions at all of our city pools. New lifeguards can start at up to $14 per hour, based on availability, and can receive free training and certification with a season commitment, and you can learn more about lifeguarding and other summer positions with the city at cityofmentor.com. The second consolidated plan meeting for the city's CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program will take place on Wednesday, April 20th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Mentor Municipal Center on the third floor in council chambers. Yes, that is tomorrow. Mentor residents are encouraged to attend and participate in these public meetings, where we will generate a discussion on identifying and prioritizing community needs for the 2022 to 2026 Consolidated Plan and the 2022 Annual Action Plan. The second meeting will include the announcement of the fiscal year 2022 CDBG City of Mentor allocation, how to access those funds from 2022, and we will also solicit comments for the consolidated plan. A third meeting will take place on June 22nd. If you'd like to attend one of these meetings, get more information, or offer feedback, you can access the community needs survey at cityofmentor.com/contactus/feedback. The Mentor Tree Commission will host a tree planting clinic this Friday, April 22nd, at 1:00 p.m. at Spring Brook Park in observance of Earth Day. This past week, council was the National Public Safety Communications Week, and I'd like to publicly thank our dispatchers for the fine work that they do every day and express our appreciation for their contributions to the community. I know I'm joined by both chiefs in lending that appreciation and support for what they do. And finally, council, we do have one new business to announce. It's not a big secret, Raising Canes at 6860 Center Street. I know many of you joined for the ribbon cutting this morning, and by the looks of the traffic, it seems like it's going to be successful. So we wish them well and appreciate their investment here. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Mr. Flipiak, on the lifeguards, I know we talked a couple weeks ago, was, you were up to three to five. Do you know if the number's getting any better?
I don't know if our applications have increased since then. As I've mentioned before, and I know that council will have an opportunity to look at this in a little bit of detail at your next work session, we are saturating social media and all other outlets that we have available to us to alert young people about the opportunities to lifeguard here, and of course, other summer job opportunities. But then, in particular, we're spending a lot of resources and time trying to bring it to their attention.
Thank you. Incredible situation. Clerks' correspondence.
Council is in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court Month End Report for 2022, and additionally, entered into the records of council as of April 8, 2022, is a hand-delivered letter from councilperson Freeman with a notarized affidavit providing his association with Key Bank and Key Corp. and his intention to withdraw from all decisions and deliberations related to them. Both documents shall be maintained as requested.
Mr. President, just to provide some context on that, Key Bank requires, who is my employer, that if any employee is appointed or elected to a public position, that within a reasonable amount of time after entering into that position, that they submit such an affidavit. And what it says is, is basically that I'm a Key Bank employee and officer. I'm an officer of Key Corp., which is the bank holding company, that I own less than 1/10 of 1% of Key Corp.'s stock, and that, as Julie indicated, that I intend not to participate in any discussions that may involve Key Bank or any of its affiliates, such as Key Bank Capital Markets, that the city may have. This was not a requirement over 10 years ago, when I was last on council, for a host of reasons, which maybe Councilman Marn can also speak to. The financial service industry has become a little more focused on these things, and I think rightly so. And so, it wasn't required then. When I did get appointed to the Lake Development Authority, it was, so I had to go through this process. And the purpose of it is, is just to be transparent as to what my roles and responsibilities are, so as to avoid any potential conflicts of interest. So if people are like, why are you submitting an affidavit? They want it to be taken seriously, and that's why I'm addressing it as well publicly. So that's the reason, because my employer wants me to, so.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Appreciate it. Council, you're in receipt of the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, March 8, 2022; Municipal Planning Commission, March 24, 2022. Before we go into old business, I just want to ask everybody to stand up, and I want to give a moment of silence to Mr. Krieger's mother passed away this weekend, and John's family's been involved with Mentor politics their whole lives. I'd like to give a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. President? Mr. Marn? We've all known John a long time, and we've all called his mother, whether it was Marguerite or Maggie, or Mrs. Krieger, Mrs. Brunner, what have you. I always called her John's mom. But I'm reading this, it's truly amazing that your heritage and your history with the city. As we all know, John's dad was on Mentor City Council in the '60s and '70s, had a little 25-year run. Right. And I didn't know this until reading this, that his parents met on, let's see here, in Walla Walla, Washington, and they're in Army Corps, right? Yeah, he was a navigator up there. Okay. And then, you move back here to Mentor. What year was that, before you were born? About 45? Yeah, yeah. The six of them lived in an airstream trailer while their house was being built. And you have three sisters. Well, there was, there's four siblings, their parents, there's six right there, plus a German shepherd and a collie. Then, John's mom, that's what I always call her, Maggie was a homemaker, and her worked with the kids at the school and homes, things of that nature, and her favorite saying was, "That's okay, you have no way of knowing," to her children, which she probably used that not long before, to you, not long before she passed. Probably as an adult. But just, a lot of things that she was involved in, in what people in our past, in the history of Mentor, what they're involved in to make Mentor what it is today. I mean, she was in the Mentor Women's Club, Lake Jog Insurance Association, Mentor Area Chamber of Commerce, Lake County Visitors Bureau, Quota Club of Lake County, Presidents of the Mentor Republicans Women's Club, Board of Trustees for Leadership Lake County, activists, and I knew this from talking to you and her about this, the Mentor Annexation Campaign, which, that was back about 1963. Sixty-three. And the list goes on and on and on and on and on. So it's truly amazing, and it just goes to show you, we have big shoes to fill, but we appreciate what your dad and what your mom did to this community for all these years. Good woman. Good woman. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marn. Old business, we have none. Thank you, Mr. Marn. Old business, we have none. New business, we have none. Persons before counsel, we have two, I think, unless the Browns were in here.
No, Browns are gone.
Chad Martin. Chad, state your name and address for the clerk when you come up to the mic. Thank you.
How you doing? Chad Martin, 8330 Brody Boulevard. I just want to give you guys a little, I'm sorry, members of boards, how you doing? I just want to talk about two trees, because I only have five minutes to talk. So I have to try to make this as quick as I can.
You got four minutes.
Four minutes, sorry.
I'm just teasing you.
So I want to talk about the Bloodgood London plane tree. Its height is 75 to 100 feet tall. It spreads around 80 feet wide. The roots can spread up to 24 feet. Our tree lawn is only 11 feet. These roots are also very invasive. They are tough, aggressive. They can lift sidewalks and curbs. They invade sewer pipes, and they could even crack foundations in buildings. So with the tree sizes, we see planting configurations. When it comes to planting a tree, the distance between the tree and the sidewalk differ depending on the expected mature height of the tree. So trees reaching up to 30 feet should be planted a minimum of three to four feet from the sidewalk. Trees reaching up to 30 to 50 feet should be planted six feet, five to six feet from the sidewalk. Trees reaching up to 50 feet should be planted a minimum of eight feet from the sidewalk. And then, another article, trees taller than 50 feet might not even fit into the average home yard due to the destruction of the roots. Can't even fit into the entire yard, but we want to try to put this into a tree lawn. All right, next. The leaves have tiny hairs on them that cause respiratory problems in mammals. My daughter, at six weeks old, had heart surgery. It's not fair to her to have to have possible respiratory issues that can affect her heart even more. These roots can and will penetrate PVC pipe, our new sewer system that was just put in. Planting distance should be planted at least 10 feet from the sewer line. Trees with large spreading root systems should be planted at least 100 feet away from a sewer. That's one tree. The second tree, the Kentucky coffee tree. Literally, it just says poisonous. The seeds and pods contain alkalide city scene, which is deadly to many animals. The bark contains sapah nins, which is also poisonous to dogs and other mammals. The height of this tree is 60 to 75 feet tall. It spreads 40 to 50 feet. So once again, this tree would have to be planted three feet from the curb. I don't, so what I would like to see is that we able to push this program back a week or two weeks. Therefore, the community alongside with the tree program can find trees that are a fair compromise. Trees that are not 100 feet tall by 80 feet wide, that will cause respiratory issues, health issues to pets, and destructive to our property. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
You, I just want to remind you, you're in Ridgewood Greens. I don't know if you mentioned that. Thank you. The next person is Jay Barnes. Jay, announce your name and your address, please.
Could I put Barnes on the name? It's Barnaby.
Oh, okay.
Hello, everybody. My name's Jay Barnaby, and thank you all for hearing our concerns. I also live in Ridgewood Greens. I live at 7204 Brody Court. And we're new residents to Mentor. My wife, my wife Carrie and I just moved in a year ago, and we love the city of Mentor. But we're just having some concerns with the size. Really, our big concern is the size of the trees. We're not opposed to having trees in a tree lawn. We actually think that does help beautify our neighborhood. But what we're seeing, we got a list, Mr. Schweitzer was kind enough to forward me a list of all the trees that are coming into our neighborhood, and they're just too big. I spoke to a well-respected arborist just Sunday, Sunday evening, and I just told him some of the names of the trees that would be planted in our tree lines. He said that's crazy. Homeowners are not going to be able to maintain these, you know, once they start growing without hiring, you know, a tree service to come in. As Chad had mentioned, we really believe that they're going to chew up our sidewalks, our sewer lines, gas lines. You know, the city, people have been outmarking where these trees are going and then where the utilities are, and they're very close. They're not within, more than 10 feet away. So we just, what we're really asking for is time and maybe your consideration to have more appropriate-sized trees planted in our tree lawns. That's our big request. So I don't know how that works, or how we'll be able to follow up on this, but we really would like you guys to consider our concerns and see if it's possible that we can work with you all to put trees in that are more appropriate for the size tree lawns that we have. With that, I thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Counsel?
Move to suspend. Uh, excuse me, move to adjourn.
This council meeting is adjourned.